All right, good morning and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, the twentieth day of May in the year 2025. All right, Councilmember Price?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item five, I'd like to call for an amendment.
All right.
And that's being circulated.
Amendment is being circulated.
And out of abundance of caution, I'm recusing myself from items fourteen, thirty-six, and thirty-eight because my wife's employer has worked with an applicant on the item.
Right on. All right, any other specials on this side? Out of objection, item thirty-four going forthwith. I think all items are forthwith for today's agenda.
Okay, great.
Right on. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
I'll take all items and general public comment. Thank you, Groot.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
For the record, my alias that was called was Yancy Lace. So if you see Stacy Segarra Bollinger, don't bother. I'll begin with the item regarding a forty-one eighteen expansion. It's really frustrating how forty-one eighteen has just become a habit of this body. Council member from District Four, Ramon, once said that she vehemently opposed forty-one eighteen, but then in a recent board meeting, her field deputy said that she wants to make sure forty-one eighteen is being enforced in her district when constituents asked about an encampment on Fulton and the 101. But criminalizing homelessness, it just makes unhoused residents criminals. It doesn't solve the problem. It just moves encampments from one place to another. Speaking of which, we have a motion regarding funding for the Inside Safe program. Thirty-five million, four hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and three cents to be shuffled around for providing leases, contracts for services. The purported goal of Inside Safe is a mobile one. People shouldn't live outside. We should get these people indoors. But we've seen this program is extremely costly and ineffective. We could be using the money for Inside Safe and just handing it to unhoused residents to go get their homes, and it would be spent more efficiently, especially considering that LASSA is in this motion. And we've seen that LASSA does a really lousy job tracking where funding goes. And there's been a lot of corruption in that body with contracts being issued to parties with conflicts of interest and just a lack of oversight as far as where the funding goes and money being spent on an open bar for a holiday party for LASSA employees. So this is, again, a noble cause, but lousy administration. Item thirty-eight is for affordable housing. Again, a noble cause, but many quote-unquote "affordable" housing projects in the city require an income of up to twenty percent, a hundred and twenty percent AMI, which is around a hundred and thousand, a hundred thousand dollars a year. I am on an affordable housing registry. I get alerts. Recently, I got one that required a seven-hundred FICO score to move in. If you have a seven-hundred FICO score and you make a hundred K a year, you can afford market-rate housing. These are taxpayer-subsidized buildings. And when we issue these revenue bonds, they go to private developers and landlords. We could be issuing mortgage revenue bonds and just give them to the people who need it to then own their homes. Homeowners are a lot less likely to become unhoused than renters. But what these affordable housing projects do is funnel more money into the hands of developers and landlords, have limited covenants, and eventually those units become market rate. And then what happens to the residents who live there, huh, Hugo?
General public comment.
I believe the children are our future, and they deserve to be safe and secure when they're walking to and from their school. It's an unwritten rule that the children should be our top priority with regard to resources in the city. But the budget the mayor proposed, along with ADOT memo, threatened the jobs of crossing guards by replacing us with traffic sergeants due to overtime on their salary. This will cost the city more money. So now the council needs to save the jobs this budget puts at risk. Saving the crossing guard program could also save our kids. Save the crossing guards. Thank you for funding us and shout out Smokey Scan.
Okay, before the next speaker comes up and before we start his time, I just want to make an announcement aloud to the room. So if this is your first time here, or even if it's not your first time here, just FYI, I believe we are highly likely to hear some very offensive things over the next couple of minutes with this next speaker. The Brown Act does not require you, the members of the audience, to listen. So it's up to you. If you would like, you're more than welcome to go for a quick walk and look at the rotunda. You're also welcome to pop in your headphones. You can even stick your fingers in your ears if you would prefer to do that. I just want to let you know that it may be very offensive. It does not reflect the views of the city or this council as a body or individually. We appreciate your patience. The fastest way to get through this is just to let them go, and then we will continue with public comment after that. Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you for the prior restraint, asshole. As far as all your building and safety reports, fuck you, Jonathan Groot. You racist communist pig. Now, look at here on item thirty-six, homelessness emergency. What do you call an emergency when you got breaking news that the U.S. Attorney Bill E.S.S.A.Y.L.I. announces formation about homeless fraud and corruption task force against the City of Los Angeles, for the record? That's what these documents here in my hands are about. Because when I attended the courthouse called a federal courthouse, Jonathan, where was your mayor? Where was your fucking mayor on May fifteenth at the federal courts? Where was she? And the issue there was about homelessness? Where the fuck was the mayor when Catherine Barger and David O. Carter put his foot down your mouth saying, "Where's the fucking mayor? Get your fat, stupid ass, dumb ass, shiny ass, and report for business of the people." Then I go into the item of L.A. Alliance for Human Rights. David O. Carter! David O. Carter! David O. Carter! And the reason to retain an attorney, the City of Los Angeles is gonna spend a million dollars of taxpayers' money for the fraud-corruption task force against Los Angeles and Los Angeles County on homelessness. And I still support Measure sixty-four and every motherfucker here to talk about, "We want our permits for marijuana because we have a right to, to invest and prosper." Fuck you, L.A.! Then, on the other highlights of this corrupted fucking city of Los Angeles, item thirty-eight, housing revenue bonds. Fuck your bonds, Mayor, and fuck you, Los Angeles, and fuck the DA for the reason, Smokey Scan, you're right, Smokey Scan, it's all about corruption. And again, shine, shine, shine. Your fucking mayor doesn't want to give permits to businesses wanting to sell Measure sixty-four voted by the voters' marijuana. Fuck you!
So that's not on the agenda?
I know. I added it, asshole. Now I'm going on to topic.
All right, you have one minute. General public comment.
Now into my general public comment, dickface. Questions loom over Trump's order to create housing for six thousand homeless vets. For years, I've been talking about vets. For years, I've been telling you fucking people of Los Angeles, you fucking Angelenos, and you fucking corrupted criminals of Los Angeles, and you, Jonathan Groot. Just remember, you participated personally and involved with L.A. attorneys to defraud the system under Trump, under Doge, because you created the crisis of homelessness, for the record. I believe you created the problem, Mr. Attorney Jonathan Groot, for all the times you ousted me out of public meetings when you illegally used impermissible restraint of my prior First Amendment speech. Forty-two U.S.C., nineteen eighty-three, America, fuck Los Angeles!
For the record, sir. For the record, sir.
Okay, next speaker?
Sir?
So if you have documents to provide to this body, then you can provide it to the sergeant who's standing directly behind you. We need to move on to the next speaker. Mr. Herman, I'm going to ask you politely, please vacate the podium. I'm not warning you yet. Please vacate the podium so we can continue with public comment. I would also note that you did manage to barely follow the rules today, and if you notice, you were given your full amount of time. Go ahead.
Quiero que nuestra concejal, Nitya, introduzca la nueva formula de control de renta, que es el cero al tres por ciento.
I want Councilwoman Nitya to introduce a new formula for rent control from zero to three percent.
Es urgente que usted, concejal Nitya, recuerde que los miembros de ACE tocamos puertas por usted.
And it's urgent for you to remember, Councilwoman Nitya Ramon, that the members of ACE went canvassing door-to-door for you.
Para que fuera nuestra, nuestra campeona de los derechos de inquilinos.
To be our champion of renters' rights.
Mi historia es sobre el desalojo. Yo vivo en mi, en mi propiedad, donde vivo ahorita por veintiocho años.
My story is about eviction or being without a house. I have lived in the property where I am for twenty-eight years.
Mi esposo, por cuarenta y nueve años, que ahí en esa casa fue donde él nació.
My husband has lived in that same house where he was born for forty-nine years.
Y tengo tres hijos, de veinticuatro, de veinte, y el más pequeño de diecisiete, con necesidades especiales.
And I have three children, twenty-four, twenty, and the youngest one is seventeen years old with special needs.
Mis tres hijos y mi esposo nacieron en esa propiedad. Y los nuevos...
My three kids and my husband were born in that property.
Y los nuevos dueños...
Speaker, your time has expired.
Señora, se le acabó su tiempo.
Thank you. My name is Juan Luna. I am a Western State's Regional Council of Carpenters. I work and recreate in the vicinity of the project. The Western State's Regional Council of Carpenters supports this project, these projects. These developers have committed to work with the, with the contractors that will hire locally and utilize apprentices from a state-certified apprenticeship training program. I would like to express my support for these projects as I believe that it will benefit the environment and the local economy by practicing protocols that will protect worker health and safety and incorporate adequate environmental mitigation. Thank you.
Good morning, Speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
Public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Justin. I'm a resident of CD fourteen, currently in the downtown, living in downtown area. I'm here to say that the rent is just way too high. The majority of us Angelenos are renters, and the fact is that most of us pay more than half our income on the cost of living, rent, here in L.A. So I'm here today to plead with you all to please introduce the bill to lower the rent cap down to three percent. The ten percent is way too high for utility and the extra roommate bump. It is ridiculous that we still have this outdated and frankly unjust and pro-landlord kind of policy in the City of Los Angeles that is home to majority renters. And so it would really mean a lot for our City Council to stand up and actually stand with the working class and renters of Los Angeles to lower the cost of living, the cost of rent, and really just, you know. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Hola, mi nombre es Luis Esturias. Soy miembro del Distrito Diez.
Yes, hello, my name is Luis Esturias. I am a member of District Ten.
Y estoy aquí, estoy hablando sobre comentarios públicos. Necesito traducción.
Sí, adelante. I'm here for public comment. I need translation.
Quiero que nuestra concejal, Cynthia, introduzca la nueva formula de control de rentas.
I want our Councilwoman Cynthia to introduce a new form for council motion, formula in the council motion.
Que es del cero al tres por ciento.
From zero to three percent.
Es urgente que usted, concejal Nitya, recuerde que los miembros de ACE...
And it's urgent for you, Councilwoman Nitya, to remember that the members of ACE...
Tocamos puertas para que usted fuera nuestra campeona.
Went door-to-door canvassing for you to be our champion.
De los derechos de los inquilinos.
For renters' rights.
Por favor, no, no defraude.
Please do not commit this fraud on us.
Y mi historia es que vivo en un distrito donde, un edificio donde mucha gente ha sido desalojada injustamente.
And I live in a building, my personal story, living in this building where many people have been evicted.
Porque la renta es muy alta, es inaccesible.
Because the rent is way too high and it's just inaccessible.
So de nada sirve de que estemos limpiando las calles de los desamparados.
So it doesn't really help out a lot that we're just cleaning the street or ridding the street of homeless people.
Cuando en la puerta de atrás están saliendo personas desalojadas que están desciendo en las calles.
When we have people in the back representing here, informing you about being evicted and being at risk of being homeless.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to? I'm sorry, who, could we, sergeants, could we identify, is that Mr. Herman who's continuing to clap? I'm being told it's Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, despite being relatively good for the first part of this meeting, you have disrupted the meeting in that I'm trying to continue public comment. So please do not disrupt this meeting anymore. This is your first and only formal warning. If you continue to do so, you'll be subject to removal pursuant to Rule Seven, Rule Twelve.
Adelante.
Quiero que nuestra concejal, Nitya, introduzca la nueva formula de control de renta de, que es del cero al tres por ciento. Es urgente que usted, concejal Nitya, recuerde que miembros de nuestra organización hacen, tocamos puertas por usted, para que fuera nuestra campeona de los derechos de inquilinos.
Yes, and we want the Councilwoman Nitya Ramon to introduce a new formula for rent control from zero to three percent. It is important for you to remember, Councilwoman, that us, the proud members of ACE, went door-to-door canvassing for you to be our champion for rent control.
A mí me están desalojando y pedí que fueran a revisar mi propiedad, y el inspector fue muy prepotente conmigo y con otras personas que me estaban ayudando para traducirle al inspector porque yo no hablo inglés.
And I am facing eviction of my apartment, and I had someone go there to, to analyze my, my belongings. And there was an inspector there who was being very preposterous with me and the people who were helping me translate with, for him, because I do not speak English.
Quisiera que nos apoyara, Nitya, por favor, porque están haciendo de todos nosotros los inquilinos una bussa.
We want your support, Nitya Ramon, please, because us, the renters, were just being abused in all sorts of ways.
Muchísimas gracias. Feliz tarde.
Thank you so much. Have a good afternoon.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Number thirty-six, number forty, and general public comment.
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Great. My name's Adam from the Los Angeles Community Action Network. Number thirty-six is finally here for a vote, and I just think it's absolutely embarrassing that...
I'm sorry, sir. How many items? Or were you just speaking on thirty-six, sir?
Thirty-six, forty, and general public comment.
Okay, so thirty-six and general public comment. Thank you.
And forty, and number forty.
Oh, okay, two minutes. Thank you.
Where should I start? Yeah, I just see all these millions coming through for, for shelter beds. I see that some of them are for congregate shelter beds in Skid Row in Council District fourteen at the URM Shelter and the Weingart Shelter. And it's just curious that the city's dumping millions of dollars into congregate beds for Inside Safe in Skid Row, but that doesn't happen anywhere else in the city. Matt, where do you get your haircut? Just kidding. So, yes, it's very clear that while nobody's listening, as always, that the priority for this council is to meet the obligations in the alliance case and just shove as many people into shitty beds as possible and spend as much money. And you can't even count the fucking beds. It's, it's just really embarrassing. The Weingart is spending money on illegal planter boxes outside of Six and San Pedro, outside of the congregate shelter, being funded by Inside Safe. Is Inside Safe money going to that? I guess I'll switch to number forty. Good day, Council President. Number forty, also embarrassing that Councilmember Yaroslavsky, who asked for a report back on forty-one eighteen, that the community had to push to actually get released, is now pushing even more forty-one eighteen zones during budget season when we're thinking about how much money is being dumped into the LAPD for criminalizing homelessness rather than actually addressing the root causes, which of course are housing availability, affordability, and poverty, none of which is solved by Inside Safe, none of which is solved by LAPD funding. And I guess I'll go to general public comment. Last Wednesday, there was a sweep scheduled in Council District fourteen. Paper signs were put up by sanitation on top of metal signs for Operation Healthy Streets. One was for the sweep on Wednesday. The metal signs say Friday. And we were there filming and trying to plead with sanitation, because Council District fourteen wasn't there, but we're trying to plead with sanitation to explain to the people on the street what these signs actually mean. They aren't, they are not noticed. And it's so frustrating that when I, people push sanitation to say, "Are you coming to this street next?" People moving their stuff from one street right into the line of fire because they don't, they really don't understand. And all sanitation ECI leads say is call three-one-one. It's so fucked up. And speaking of displacement and banishment from the land, I think it's incumbent on all of us and shameful that none of you in nineteen months of genocide have brought up Palestine.
Next speaker?
I'd like to speak in regards to the public comment and in regards to tenants' rights. Yes, hello, my name's Julie Robles, and I live in District fourteen. And I'm here to, I would like to, for our Councilnada, to introduce the new formula of rent control that is zero to three percent. It's urgent for Councilnada to remember that the members of ACE knock doors and for her to become a champion of the rights of tenants. And my story is that I'm a small landlord in District fourteen, and I'm organizing a small group of also landlords in District fourteen, and we, that we all feel the same way that zero to three percent is more than enough, especially in these hard times. And I would really... Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General comment.
So you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay, good morning, Council. My name is Jazal Mata from ACE. Los Angeles faces enormous challenges: wildfires, soaring housing costs, and crumbling infrastructure that cost our city billions each year. Right now, we pay one-point-four billion in fees and interest and debt services annually to Wall Street banks. Imagine if that money stayed here, rebuilding neighborhoods, creating affordable homes, and supporting local businesses. Our deficit right now in L.A. is close to a billion dollars. It's basically what we're paying to banks. It costs four-hundred-and-sixty thousand to get this study started. The only solution that you all are offering is job cuts, cuts to our neighborhood services. That's the last thing we need right now. North Dakota's century-old public bank model has returned over a billion in its general fund while investing in additional one billion in education. Nitya Ramon, remember who got you where you are, and remember the people that elected you. Thank you.
On thirty-eight, you got bonds for twenty-eight point one million, another twenty-point-one million dollars. And again, you're not putting down how you're paying for them. Another illegal game in your foolish trip. Number forty, what is this? Were you trying to tell people who have no place to live? You can't sit, you can't lie, you can't store, you can't sleep. What kind of inhumane sociopaths are all of you? While you rob the homeless money, I know you're sitting there just trying to ignore this all, but the DOJ and a federal court are gonna make it so that you cannot ignore this anymore. And you, Mr. City Attorney, you got a good chance of going to jail. I know why that you have to pay nine-hundred-thousand dollars, because you're a defendant and you can't prosecute at the same time. I was in federal court. Bass didn't show up, and the president of this board didn't show up because you're trying to manipulate getting rid of Judge Carter, only he isn't going for your foolish business. Now to public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
No, I got one-thirty. I think you don't know what the hell you're doing, bud.
You said that you would like, can you hold us time for a second? You said now on to public comment. So that tells me you want to move to general. You do not get to use your additional time.
You're eating up my time right now.
Your, your time is paused, actually, if you look at the clock.
You illegal piece of junk.
So you have one minute for general public comment per your request. Go ahead. Can you start his time over at one? Thank you.
You people here that are here for lowering your rent, go take a look at another agenda item where we finally forced these fools to talk about paying the proper price for housing, which is fifteen thousand, five sixty, instead of sixty-eight-hundred thousand dollars. If you divide fifteen, five, sixty into six-hundred thousand, that's thirty-four and a half to one. At eight-hundred thousand, it's fifty-four to one. So if you want your housing costs lowered, you're gonna have to hammer these people to start paying the right amount of housing because of their contracts with the developers automatically mean that you're gonna be paying more money, and your leadership isn't telling you because they don't know the money, because they don't care, or they're bought and sold by somebody. Do you got that, people? This is how money is robbed by the city attorney.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker?
And you're going down, bud. I've already guaranteed it.
So if the previous speaker, we are trying to move on to the next speaker. So this is your own first and only formal warning. Do not disrupt this meeting. I believe the speaker's name is George. So George, please do not disrupt this meeting. This is your first and only formal warning. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Quiero que nuestra concejal, Nitya, introduzca la nueva formula de control de renta, que es del cero al tercer por ciento. Es urgente que usted, concejal Nitya, recuerde que los miembros de ACE tocamos puertas por usted, para que nuestra campeona de derechos de los inquilinos.
Yes, we want Councilwoman Nitya Ramon, Councilwoman Nitya Ramon, to introduce a new rent control formula from the number zero to three percent. It is important for you to remember, Councilwoman, that us, the members of ACE, went canvassing door-to-door for you to be our champion for the rent control.
Mi nombre es Amelia Lopez. Mi historia es la siguiente. Pertenezco al Distrito Siete de Mónica Rodriguez. Entré vivir a la ciudad de Silma, California, con el concejal en Mónica Rodriguez. El día doce de diciembre de dos mil veintitrés, y después de un año de cinco meses, el dueño quería que yo firmara un contrato diferente. El primero, donde yo firmaba...
Yes, un minuto, señora. So yes, my personal anecdote is as follows. Living in District Seven under Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez in Silmar, California, and on December twelfth of two thousand and three, I had an incident with a landlord claiming that the, the forms that I, or the contract that I had signed was, was different from what I had believed after living there for over a year and five months.
El primero, donde yo firmaba que yo cuidaba a su esposa con la enfermedad de Alzheimer por dos semanas.
First, where I signed that I was to take care of his wife, who had Alzheimer's for two weeks.
Para que él tuviera más beneficios ayuda del Medicare y Medicare.
So that he could have more benefits and help for Medicare.
Y como no le enfermí, me di una notificación.
Because I didn't sign, he gave me a notice. Señora, se le acabó su tiempo.
Mi nombre es Sofía Mendoza. Vivo en el distrito nueve. Soy miembro de ACE.
Yes, hello, my name is Sofía Mendoza. I live in District nine. I am a member of ACE.
Quiero que nuestra concejal Nithya Raman.
We want the Councilwoman Nithya Raman.
Introduzca la nueva fórmula de control de renta del cero al tres porciento.
We want her to introduce a new formula for rent control from zero to three percent.
Es urgente porque ya tenemos mucho tiempo, ¿verdad? Y esto ya tiene que ser ya.
It's urgent because we've been at this for a long time, right? So we need this right now.
Recuerde que los miembros de ACE tocamos puerta por usted para que fuera nuestra campana.
And remember that the members of ACE went door-to-door canvassing for you so that you could be our champion.
Sí, yo como inquilino tengo dificultad con el dueño porque él quiere aumentarme más la renta. Por eso les pido que es importante, esto no nada más Nithya Raman, a todos los concejales.
And me, as a renter, I'm having difficulty paying my rent because my landlord is trying to raise the rent, so that's why I'm asking you, not just you, Nithya Raman, but all of the council.
Mi esposo tiene dos trabajos, y si llega el aumento de renta del diez porciento, el ocho porciento, nos vamos a quedar prácticamente en la calle.
My husband has two jobs, and if we are facing paying a ten or eight percent increase in rent, we're at risk of practically being on the street.
Por eso es importante que ya pongan esto ya en el consilio. Por favor, gracias.
And that's why it's important to put this in the council now. Please, thank you.
Antes que nada, quiero decirles a todos los concejales que es una falta de respeto que los inquilinos vengan y les digan lo que están pasando con sus rentas, porque no tienen un tope de renta, y ustedes estén platicando sin ponerles atención.
Yes, one second, señora, para que le pueda traducir. Yes, hello, my name is Luisa Galindo. Before I would like to speak, I would like to say that it is a complete lack of respect from the council members, that while us, the renters, are coming here to speak to you about our rent control needs and our difficulties that we have, and for all of you to be standing there just talking with one another.
Desde la vez pasada que vine y hablé, por ahí vi sonrisas. No es ningún juego, hombres. Pónganse a trabajar.
Yes, since the last time I came here, it was the same thing, seeing all smiles everywhere. This isn't a game, this isn't a joke, this is real.
Nithya Ramos, te pedimos, vamos, Nithya Ramos. Nosotros estuvimos apoyando, te eres parte del pueblo, vamos, Nithya Ramos. Pon tajo en la mesa. Cero porciento, mínimo, tres porciento máximo.
Come on, Nithya Raman, come on, seriously, we need you, we need you, Nithya Raman. We need this new formula, zero percent minimum with a three percent cap, please.
Vamos, agarren la pala y pónganse a trabajar por los inquilinos. Isabel Jurado, estoy con Julie, la pequeña dueña de casas.
And yes, come on, pick up the shovel and start working, council members. I'm with Julie, the small representative here, the worker from the domestic worker.
También caminamos por ti. Pedimos a Steve que le dé una cita a Julie. Vamos, pónganse a trabajar por los inquilinos.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Come on, Councilwoman Jurado, we are asking for your help too. We want to schedule a meeting with Julie, please.
And I believe we called out audit L.A. as well, so I believe, Speaker, do you have the mic yet, or no? Just one second. If we could get the speaker in the center aisle, the remote micro, or the wireless microphone, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
But thank you, Mr. Groth, for not forgetting about me. Let's go with all items, and then you tell me when I'm off topic, because I didn't study it as well as I should have, and then public comment.
Okay, so you said all items, and then just for clarification, the items that are open for public comment are items one and two, items four through ten, items thirty-six through thirty-nine, and items forty-one through forty-three.
Does that include the police one? Or I could just go for it, and you could just...
So, the police pensions is not, that's item twenty-six, it was actually continued. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sir, we'll go for it. Shout out to Smoke and Scan. Okay, well, I want to start off first, it's like, okay, let's see who's listening. Ms. Hernandez, where are you? Mr. President, come on, come on, guys, Ms. Padilla, everyone start listening to the public, we're here to talk to you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Monica. And Mr. CIO, I feel like that he always has to look like he's about to be tossed under the bus, because I think that you guys, you know, come on, you guys are harsh on him, you're giving him like not a lot to work with, and then he's here sweating every time I'm here, so give him a break. I always say hi to him, he says hi back, so he's been cool, but go easy on him, okay? A little bit, I mean, you try. But I'm telling you guys, Mr. McCosker's not listening. Oh, Mr. McCosker, come on, you're letting me down. Like, and even this, well, I'm glad the city attorney's not listening, because then he'll be calling me off topic, so, you know, but that's, you know, like with all the, you know, I see the closed, all the lawsuits, you know, yeah, a lot of lawsuits are coming. Mr. Hugo's not listening, even though I'm always here about his division, right, his area, shouldn't he be listening, Ms. Monica? You know, right, he should be listening, but he's not. I don't like it when he doesn't listen. Who else isn't listening? Mr. President's not listening. You're listening, I know you are, because every time I try to catch, Ms. Hernandez is not listening, she swears she is, and so I always, I try to catch her, I've yet to catch her not listening, even when she's talking. Are you listening, Ms. Hernandez? Okay, all right, I got you this time. All right, I'm just gonna keep doing it till everyone's listening, because, Mr. Lee, are you listening? Mr. Lee, calling Mr. Lee.
So, Speaker, this is not on the agenda, I'm gonna ask you to stick to the agenda items.
I thought your names were all on the agendas, I see your names all over the agenda.
So, I appreciate what you're trying to do, but please continue with your agenda public comment.
Okay, continue with it, okay, okay. Well, I'm here, I'll wait till what I came here for, to public comment, but in the meantime, like all those houses that you're giving away, like the one and two, you know, there's a lot of addresses that you're giving away. Hi, Mr. Price, I hope you're listening. But anyway, I think that you should give them to the people who need them, like there's a lot of people that would benefit from getting free houses, you know, one and two, like you're taking the thing off the rolls or whatever. Instead of just taking things off the rolls, give those houses to people who need it. I'll be happy to take one, I bet Smoke and Scan would love to have one, we all would, you know, like it would help with the house, right, Ms. Monica? It would help a lot, and, hmm. And then the one, I really wanted to talk about the police one, because I think that, you know, I don't know, they're doing, I didn't like what's going on over at the police meeting today, and, boy, it's really hard to concentrate when no one's listening. But you're always listening, Mr. Groth, so in a way that's bad, because I wish you wouldn't, because then you wouldn't call me off topic. You see how that works? So I wish you weren't listening, and I wish they were. Bob, are you listening? Wave high if you're listening.
I was not.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Or you're welcome to go to general.
Okay, well, we'll just let the clock, I just need, I just need Bob to show signs of life, like really.
Okay, so I've asked you, I'm gonna move to general public comment.
Okay, here, now, public comment.
You want to talk, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm here to talk to Mr. Hugo about his area, and also all of you, okay? I don't know if you're aware, there's a lawsuit in the city of Los Angeles, okay? It's Jane Doe versus, oh my God, Gavin Potter. She was a scientist, they're both Scientologists, and she was, she claims that she was sexually assaulted by him as a minor, and that she was forced by Scientology to marry her abuser, so, because they don't believe in going to the police. And there's a lot of Jane Doe cases, even against Danny Masterson, they're not allowed to go to the police, okay? So there's a lot of nonsense, there's a lot of victims, women victims, children victims, because do you know that in the state of California, that you don't have to be any legal age to get married? Are you listening? Because you're a woman, you guys, all the women here, you're allowed to have children brides. Okay, come on, CD four, you're not lis, are you listening? Signs of life. Okay, that's all, Bobby, you listening? This is my time, so I could ask you if you're listening.
Okay, okay, I was not listening, for the record. Where are we next? Was that the last speaker?
Yes, that was the last speaker.
Okay, I'm told that we, public comment is now closed. We have a certain amount of time, folks, we don't, we don't have unlimited time on this. Okay, anybody who's yelling out will be removed, simple as that. Don't yell out or get removed, that's your warning. We're waiting for more amendments? Okay, well then, then we'll reopen public comment. Okay, good reprieve on the public comment, we've just been told we're waiting for a few amendments, so with that, we'll get ten more minutes of public comment. So if your name has been called, why don't we have the next speaker? If you could read the names, we have...
So, I'll call out more names.
Okay.
Margarita Gonzalez, Aida Rivera, Kirsten Peterson, Jared Kilo.
We're taking a look at item number one, and it's talking about the non-compliance of LAMC code and whether or not there is any sort of inspection costs, and whether there will be any sort of consequences and penalties followed up. I talked to the Disability Commission, and I know for a fact, as part of the advocacy that I and many others have done to hold the city accountable, they demand a letter directly from the city attorney herself, Heidi Feltsin Soto, on a annual report, whether there was any sort of selective prosecution of fines on LAMC violations. Now, the office has been formally noticed as such, and we are looking forward to that report. Is it the case, is it the case, that maybe there are some agencies, maybe there are some entities that are not being held to the same standard, not being issued the same fines? Similarly, for number two, we have yet another appeal for LAMC violations and compliance to code. Is there any potential possibility that there's a discrepancy between who gets prosecuted on LAMC code violations? I know quite a bit, because I actually had to learn it when I was criminally prosecuted and beat a case against Heidi Feltsin Soto. It's why I call myself a Heidi Feltsin Soto superfan. I am her number-one fan, and we know for a fact that she is in fact not prosecuting everybody equally on the LAMC violations. Otherwise, the city would have collected on the money for an entity such as a church, we'll say, that exists on El Run Hubert Way, that may or may not be called Scientology, that owes the city quite a big chunk of money, close to millions. We're moving on to item number four. Yet again, we have another motion on LAMC code violations, whether fines and/or criminal prosecution will be taking place. Blockading the public right of way is one of those fifty-six-oh-nine, fifty-six-eleven, fifty-six-twelve. Why is it then that the city attorney's office keeps not prosecuting entities equally with fines and criminal prosecution as is required under the law, and you're selectively choosing which entities you do and do not want to go after, do and do not want to get money? That is the literal definition of malicious and selective prosecution. The literal definition, literal definition committed by Heidi Feltsin Soto herself as witnessed for my case very clearly. That's why I call myself a Heidi Feltsin Soto superfan. That's why I love that she selectively prosecutes people.
But I've been listening intently, and I do not believe this is related to the LEDBS lien items.
And we can cut straight to public, general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Why is this city council the only committee so far that continues to chop virtual public comment? I submitted a letter to the executive office of the city attorney's office yesterday on this very same thing. There are disabled people that want to make their voice heard but can't, because they can't physically show up here. Tell me how that's not a viewpoint suppression or discrimination. Tell me why this room still has the same infrastructure to hold virtual public comment. You don't need any more licenses, you don't need any more video camera equipment, you have all the things necessary here to hold virtual public comment, and you don't. It's the stupidest thing to get the city sued over, it's the dumbest way to violate people's rights, it's the utter most disgusting thing you can do to discriminate against the ADA community, but you do it anyway, and you do it repeatedly, and you're gonna get the city sued over this shit. It's disgusting. Hold virtual public comment again, and we know you're not calling names on the virtual teleprompter. For fuck's sake, it's the stupidest thing to get the city in trouble for.
And before the next speaker begins, just as an FYI, if you do require an accommodation under the ADA, please let either the sergeants know if you are here in person, or you can reach out to the clerk's office remotely to let them know. Thank you.
Mi nombre es Tomasa Martinez. Soy miembro de ACE, y vivo en el distrito catorce. Estoy hablando de comentario público, necesito traducción.
Yes, my name is Tomasa Martinez, proud member of ACE, I live in District fourteen. Adelante.
Quiero que nuestra concejal Nithya introduzca la nueva fórmula de control de renta que es cero al tres porciento. Es urgente que usted, concejal Nithya, recuerde que los miembros de ACE tocamos puertas por usted para que fuera nuestra campana de los derechos de inquilinos.
Yes, and we want Councilwoman Nithya Raman to introduce a new rent control formula from zero to three percent. It's important for you to remember, Councilwoman, that us, the members of ACE, went door-to-door canvassing for you to be our renters' rights champion.
Isabel Jurado, te quedas como la reina de mi pueblo, de mi pueblo, de las fiestas patronales con la corona. Nada más. Necesitamos que hagas valer esa silla donde estás. Y esa corona, necesitamos tu energía para poder defender a los inquilinos de tu distrito y otros distritos.
And Isabel Jurado, we need you to be the champion, the queen that you are of our people. You need to make, do, need to make good of that position of power that you have in your seat to help us in our districts and other districts as well.
Y apoyar a otros que estés a favor de Larso, y que defiendes a los inquilinos, ya que están pasando por muchos desalojos y acoso.
And support Larso and other renters, to support renters in facing abuse and evictions.
Que defiendes a tu pueblo porque tenemos la esperanza en ti, porque caminamos por ti, tocamos puertas por ti. Gracias.
And to defend your people, because we went canvassing for you, we went supporting you and representing you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Kika Keith. I've been here plenty of times before, I'm a social equity retail license holder. We're here because we just left the Government Operations Committee meeting where the DCR did not show up to go over their fee schedule. I'm asking you, did you all read the state audit where they were accused of...
Speaker, can you hold her time really quick? So, Speaker, you said item number ten.
I'm speaking on general comment right now.
A general public comment? Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment. Just for the record, LEDB, item number ten is a building and safety-related item. So, you have one minute, if we could start her time at one, you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. I would like the Budget Committee to ask more questions. Why is it that the DCR is charging social equity operators more than general applicants? Why are we paying sixteen-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars to send out a mailing? Why are we paying two-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars for a viral hearing? Please question them. We demand that you reject the fee schedule, the DCR's fee schedule, and block this outrageous fee study. It's time to dismantle the DCR and immediately adopt the Cannabis Equity Reform and Market Stabilization Act. Please make sure to look into what the DCR is doing, it has been corrupt, they have disrupted our lives, and you guys are not asking the thorough questions. Ask why are they charging the fees? Ask for an audit of the cannabis equity grant. Look at the state audit report, please, we appeal to you all, thank you.
Mi nombre es Aida Rivera. Vivo en el distrito nueve. Estoy hablando comentario público.
Yes, my name is Aida Rivera, I live in District nine for public comment.
Necesito traducción. Quiero que nuestra concejal Nithya introduzca la nueva fórmula de control de renta que sea del cero al tres porciento. Es urgente que usted, concejal Nithya, recuerde que los miembros de ACE tocamos puerta por usted, pero que fuera nuestra luchona de los derechos de los inquilinos.
Yes, we are urging for Councilwoman Nithya Raman to introduce a new rent control formula from zero to three percent. It's urgent for you to remember, Councilwoman, that us, the members of ACE, went door-to-door canvassing for you to be our champion of renters' rights.
También le hablo a todos los concejales, no solo a Tintia, a todos los concejales, porque nosotros también hemos tocado puertas por alguno de ellos, como el concejal de mi distrito nueve, Colin Price. Nunca, nunca ha dicho nada, siempre venimos a pedirle que él también nos ayude a que pase la ley Larso, la ley del control de renta.
And we are also talking to all the council members, not just Nithya Raman, we went door-to-door canvassing for other council members, including... We went door-to-door canvassing for other council members, including the one from my district, District Nine, Mr. Curran Price, who has never responded, he's never showing up for anything, he's never done anything to support Larso or other rent control stabilization.
Yo, ahorita en mi lugar donde vivo, me están aumentando el 10%. Soy una madre soltera que vivo con el salario mínimo y fíjense ustedes que si pago renta no como. Por eso les pido que toquen el corazón y nos ayuden a que pase esa ley que no nos aumente más la renta, gracias.
And where I live, I am pacing a 10% rent increase, please, I am a single mom, I need to support my kids and I'm making a minimum wage, with, with the salary that I make, it's not enough to cover my rent so I am not really even able to afford food, so please, please help us with this rent control.
City council members, my name is Luis Rivera, I'm a social equity owner and an advocate and my voice represents hundreds of others here who are not able to be here today or who have already lost their license, life savings and dreams due to the incompetence of the Los Angeles Cannabis Department. For years, I have faced excessive delays, unclear guidance and unnecessary financial strain caused by this dysfunctional department. Before the city approves any fee increase, rages any wages or conducts another lottery, the DCR must fix what is broken. The fee study should have been conducted by an independent third party with input from public license holder, excuse me, particularly those social equity, in the social equity program. The cannabis department needs to be regulated, we need to lower free fees, have a progressive timeline so legal businesses can open stores, employ people and contribute taxes. We urge you to reject the proposed fee increase until an independent third party is conducting...
Speaker, your time has expired.
And the city adopt the Cannabis Equity Market Stabilization Motion, thank you.
Next speaker. Good morning, Speaker, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general, go ahead.
All right, thank you very much, cartel city attorney, start with item number 36. It's about homeless emergency account. I'm really concerned because there's no such thing as homeless emergency account.
Hold on just a second, we're trying to get the timer correct, okay, go ahead.
Just for the record, you never get the timer correct, the only job for you is to put the timer correct and then you never do that correctly.
So this is not on the agenda, you know the rules.
Item number 36 is about homeless emergency account and then how do we deal with homeless emergency account? You have to make sure you put the homeless timer emergency account correctly first before you talk about homeless emergency account. Now, on television, on a daily basis, that homeless services continue to fail the audit, continue to fail the annual inspection report. Now, you are talking about a homeless emergency account, there's no money in the account, why? Why is that? Because the money goes to local profit, so-called nonprofit making the largest homeless profit. There's no money because our city attorney put all the money to those illegal, illegal, blumendingo, illegal immigrants, illegal aliens out there, so there's no such thing as homeless emergency account. Now, let's move on to item number 38. Item number 38 is about multi-family housing bounds, talking about 20 million, $20 million and then with only to build 64 units. Now, I understand why there's no money for homeless because you are trying to housing 64, 64 homeless people but with the cost of more than $20 million. Now, I understand why the city attorney is getting like a half a million dollar annual salary right now on the yearly basis is because 20 million, you can only house 64 people. In the city of LA, they are more than 100,000 homeless people and then using the same formula in order to house 100,000, you need several trillions of dollars. That's the reason why you continue to fail. Item number 39 is about the reward for the unsolved murder. I'm not surprised because our city attorney continue to defund the police department to give themselves a bigger race. Now, you have 2,000 less LAPD officer on the street and then you want to solve the murder. You have 300 less detective on the street and then city attorney wants to solve the murder. You have a budget crisis with the LAPD and then our city attorney wants to solve the murder. Now, I understand, we don't need LAPD because LA city attorney continue to ask the public to solve the murder instead of asking the LAPD to do their job to solve the murder. I'm so confused that maybe city attorney, you have to go down the street, find the murder yourself if you continue to defund the LAPD. Going to the general public comment...
General public comment.
Is that I'm concerned about the domestic violence, sexual assault in the city of Los Angeles, specific about Casey Ventura because somehow she wanted millions of millions of money, she voluntarily walked into the Sean Diddy's bedroom, she voluntarily, you know, opened her leg and take off her clothes and then somehow right now she is claiming that's sexual assault, that somehow right now all of a sudden she's claiming that's rape. Somehow right now she is saying that, you know, he does not have my consent, that's not how it works. You are the one who wanted the money, you are the one who wanted, wanted the fame, you want, you are the one who wanted to have a, to have like your celebrity status in the city of LA and then right now you are saying, that's not, you regret it, that's not how it works. That's why I support Black Lives Matter, that's why I support, we have to make sure free Sean Diddy, he is innocent, Black Lives Matter only.
Greetings, councilmen, my name is Manny Salcedo of the Western State's Carpenters. I work in recreating the community and I'm here in support of the Violet Tower Projects 29. We're grateful and honored to team up with a responsible developer like Heinz Development who shares many of the common goals of the community by hiring safe, responsible contractors and has made a commitment to the community to create jobs and provide much-needed housing. Good jobs, middle-class wages and good benefits. These are the type of jobs that you could start a career off for an Angeleno here in this area. And as we know, not everybody goes to college, so a state-accredited apprenticeship program with the carpenters is a learn why you, learn why you earn situation. This project will benefit many of the protocols for the workers' projects for health and safety and will be incorporated in the environmental mitigations. We ask that you approve this project, thank you very much and have a great day.
Okay, mi nombre es Antonio Hernandez y vengo porque necesito ayuda.
Yes, my name is Antonio Hernandez, I'm here asking for help.
Porque el lugar donde vivo, el dueño de la vivienda está usando de todos nosotros inquilinos.
Because where I live, the owner, the landlord, he is abusing of all of us, the renters, he is abusing us.
Y quiero que por favor nos atiendan y nos tomen en cuenta de que lo que necesitamos es urgente.
And please, we need you to help us and take into account that what we are asking for is urgent because all of us...
Como inquilino estamos padeciendo abuso tanto como los pagos nos los han alterado sin darnos aviso.
And because all of us, the renters, are facing abuses, are experiencing abuse, for example, in the rents that we have to pay where they're not even informing us of the changes that they are making.
Quisiera que nuestra concejal...
We ask for our councilperson.
Señor Anmitui, nos ayudara y viera lo que estamos sufriendo nosotros allá afuera porque de aquí adentro realmente no se ve lo que se sufre allá afuera.
We ask for the Councilwoman Nithia to look outside and see what all of us are experiencing and what we are suffering because from inside here, you can't really see what we are dealing with.
A nosotros allá afuera como inquilino nos humillan que no tenemos derecho y eso no es verdad, gracias.
Us outside as renters, we are being humiliated and we're being humbled telling us that we don't have rights, but that's not true, thank you.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
My name is Mark Gaynor, I'm a member of DSA Los Angeles and SEIU 721 and I'm a resident of District 10. I want to talk about the budget. The city is facing a significant shortfall and we have an opportunity to begin stabilizing that over the longer term by funding a study for a public bank for Los Angeles and so I'm calling on all council members to support that in this budget. I also want to note that because there's a significant reduction in homelessness services and rents are continuing to rise, we are going to continue to see more people displaced onto the streets. We have an opportunity to sign me that at the source by capping rent at 3% and 60% of CPI, thank you.
Dia, Park, Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto, Martinez, Jaroslavski, 12 members present in court, Mr. President.
All right, Mr. City Attorney, anything to report out of closed session?